All right, I'll call to order the planning board meeting for January 25th, 2023. Welcome aboard to our hybrid planning board meeting. We've got participants online through Zoom and here in the meeting hall. I'll first make introductions and give our little Zoom spiel and away we'll go. So I'm William Hanley, I'm Chair. We've got Kim Keen here in the meeting hall as well. She's our code enforcement officer and helps run the Zoom hearing. Online, other planning board members, we have Meredith Randolph. Hello, Tracy Keller. Hi Tracy, we've got Dave Ashmore. Howdy Dave, so four of us here tonight from the planning board. We've got a quorum. I'll just give the Zoom spiel really quick. I'm sure we're all familiar with the Zoom world by now, but um. If you are online, if you could go and sign in on chat, please, just so our recording secretary knows who attended and can get everybody's names into the minutes. And I should also mention her, then Heidi, how are you Heidi? Heidi Smalling.
I'm good, how are you guys?
Fantastic.
Good.
And uh, you know, not too heavy of an agenda tonight. We've got two regular items on the agenda as well as land use zoning ordinance amendments, proposals and uh. Let's get going. First thing off, we've got approval of minutes from the last hearing on January 11th.
I make a motion to approve the meeting note minutes of January 11th.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Is there any way we can show that owl on there so I can?
It should be, it's on, you can put this on, it doesn't.
I don't know.
All right. We're gonna keep going. All right, so we've got the minutes taken care of. Item three tonight, we've got Noel Musson here. And we're gonna talk about the proposed land use zoning ordinance and land use map amendments for the 2023 annual town meeting on May 2nd. Noel?
Great. So I think the purpose of the meeting tonight is really just to give the planning board a quick update on what is happening, what is coming before you for um. I think is it the February 8th meeting, there's a public hearing scheduled and that's when we really would vote, the board would vote on these particular Luso related forms. So I thought what I do is just kind of give you guys the overview of what was being proposed. If you had any questions or had a chance to look at the drafts that Kim had sent out, happy to try to answer some questions, but you don't need to vote on anything tonight. That's coming out later in the month. So what we actually scheduled was February 8th, public hearing, and then there's like a reserve public hearing for the next meeting. The 22nd. So I'm just gonna run down the list of things. Hopefully, everybody has graphs. I don't know Bill, if it makes sense for me to, can I just run down in my order? Is there a particular order?
If you've got an order established, Noel, why don't we stick with? Yeah, can everybody online hear us okay? Yeah, everybody's.
Yes, I can hear you fine and I see your little owl on the bottom right of the my screen.
Do you see an image of me when I'm?
Yes.
Okay.
I wonder if you go to view can?
Yeah.
I did, I had a view and.
Yeah, we're just.
It's usually you can see it, okay.
It's just not showing on our end, yeah, speaker.
So does that help Bill?
I think so. So the owl should switch to Noel. When Noel starts talking.
I don't see it.
We're gonna make.
On our end, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see Noel.
You can see Noel.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll just forward you ahead.
Usually it's lit up, that's all.
Yeah.
Anyway, so one thing we are, the land use committee was asked by the Board of Selectmen to work on a short term rental. Investigate whether or not the town needs to do anything for short term rentals. So we've been working on a short term rental licensing ordinance. That is not a planning board approval, but we will probably talk about that at the public hearing. And happy to take comments. We're really trying to find a nice balanced approach for this whole process. And just have a balanced ordinance that the town can consider at the town meeting. So that's that's where we are with the short term rental licensing ordinance. But I figured I'd hit that one right up front because a lot of people are interested in it. Or in this number. So that will be, that will be discussed, but not voted on by the board. The next one we're working on is, I call it sort of establishment of use, but there's really a warrant article that we're having that we've drafted that amends the timeline or the deadline for establishing a use after conditional use approval granted. So currently it's 12 months. And we're just proposing to extend it to 24 months, given the realities of time that it takes to actually implement projects sometimes. Do you want me to pause for, if anybody has any questions, just to speak up or otherwise I'm just gonna run through the list.
Feel free to ask if anybody has any questions.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Great idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
The next one we're working on is just an amendment to the land use ordinance that eliminates the air landing strip performance standard, which clearly isn't one. There, it's not in the allowed use, in the allowed uses table. And we really don't need that standard. So what we're doing is just actually just reserving that section in the ordinance rather than try to renumber the whole rest of the section. So what you'll see at the end is really a reserve.
Finally.
Yeah. Some, a lot of these, a lot of the warrant articles this year are actually more housekeeping than substantive policy discussions, but. Any questions on that, air landing strips? Or sites, I think. All right, the next one, we're going to, there's a proposal to amend section 3.5 footnote to add, just to add some clarity that only lots within the Village of Northeast Harbor qualify for the Village Commercial zoning districts, 1,000 square foot per lot section. So the way it's currently written, if you're in any village commercial district all over town and you're in water and sewer, you're allowed to have a minimum lot area of 1,000 square feet. The intent of that change when we did it a couple of years ago is really just to specify that it's really in the Village of Northeast Harbor and not other villages. So this amendment would just clarify that. Questions? Okay. The next one is lot access dates. This is really, as a warrant article, that just corrects the date where, was it last year or the year before, the town voted to change the standards for lot access to make make it easier for lots that existed before a certain date to have access without meeting the current, you know, 50 foot wide right of ways and other road standards. And the date that was in that was actually, it was, we should have had an earlier date because the town meeting that year was like was actually shifted out longer for one reason or another. I think that was the year that the, that the the year that we were referring, wasn't that the year that, that something in the town report wasn't done, so they had to extend the town meeting? The audit, yeah. So anyway, we should have referenced the earlier town meeting day because that's when the change that we're trying to, you know, was actually voted on. All short, short, for this correction today. Questions on that? All right. Next is a proposed warrant amendment to amend the, or clarify really the dimensional standards for a lot. So when you, when you have currently, the way the ordinance is interpreted and reads is that if you have single family dwelling unit or a duplex, we're gonna add a single family dwelling unit or duplex, you have to meet the dimensional standards for each one of those. So essentially a duplex is like its own structure. You can, to duplexes, you have to meet the dimensional standards for each duplex. And so we're just clarifying in the, in the language if that's what applies. So that if you have a you don't have to meet the dimensional standards, time two for each unit in the duplex essentially. That's no policy change. That's exactly the way it is now. We're just, instead of some questions about it, so we're just clarifying the language. Um, let's see, the next one deals with road setbacks. And really that's just clarifying where him measures the road setback from in a public and private. So the difference, the ordinance is if you're from a it's just where you measure the setback from. Setbacks are designated in the table, but where you measure them is going to be consistent. So. Questions on that? Okay. The last, well, not the last one. The next one is, this is more of a question and a policy change, but we've had some and I'm sure you guys have got these examples in the past, but some questions about in a residential setting, if you want to build a barn or a garage, you have to have that as an accessory to your residential structure. So you're actually forcing people to build a house if all they want to do is put a barn on their property. There's nothing in the ordinance that allows somebody to do that right now. So this change, this proposed change would actually add some uses in the allowed uses table that would allow somebody to come in and get a permit to build a barn or a garage without having that tied to having to build a residential dwelling unit. Questions? Okay, I was actually surprised by that, so it's an interesting change. All right. Another one we're proposing is a, just a correction in the ordinance to really increases the percentage of the footprint in the shoreline zone. It's really just to make it consistent with shoreline zoning, so. For principal accessory structures in the shoreline zone, we're just increasing the the footprint limit to 20% from 15%. That's our consistency issue in shoreline zoning standards. Questions on that? All right. The other one is a marina definition clarification. So this one is, we've had some questions recently about marinas and expansions of use. And this is to clarify that by adding moorings, you're not actually expanding the use of an approved use and marina. So we're just, just clarifying that moorings don't constitute an expansion of use.
Plus they are regulated by the harbor master, not the town.
Right. And to clarify that moorings specifically are regulated by the harbor master, not the town. I mean, not the planning board or the code enforcement. Questions? On that? Okay. And then the last one is basically a zone change request. Three parcels that are adjacent to one another. The parcels are, this was a, this actually came in right after the deadline for putting some changes in from last year's town meeting. And it is to change from an SR2, including an R2 zoning district. These parcels are fully outside of the 250 foot shoreline zone. And they're requesting that it could be changed to R2. Questions on that? All right. And then I will say there is a possibility that there's been some new legislative work in shoreline zoning work with floodplain and shoreline zoning height conflicts. And I don't have the language from the EDP yet, but if we can squeeze that one in, it probably will be worthwhile to try to squeeze that one in. Because it will, what that will do is it helps address, there's an inherent conflict between being resilient for floodplain standards and shoreline zoning, which wants you to keep your height down, but you can't always make the two work. And the legislative the rules have actually changed to help accommodate some of that. I just don't have, I don't have any good language yet. So. That's it. Questions, comments? Straightforward? Awesome.
Quiet. You guys are broke. That or next time.
Which one? Oh, yeah, I mean, if anybody has any questions on short term rental licensing ordinance, I'd be happy to discuss it. But there's a draft. We had a Luso committee meeting last week and went through it again. And so what you'll see either in front of you or online is the version that takes what we had talked about and made a few edits. So it's the same, like the additions and strikers are the same, would be the language that was added since the last draft. And the intent of the licensing ordinance is really just to get a handle on what is the extent of the short term rental. I don't, I don't want to say it's an issue, but what are the extent of the number of short term rentals in the town? Where are they? How do we start to understand that? You can put a little, a very basic regulatory framework at this point, rather than going, you know, heavy on short term rentals. So it's a, it's a, you keep using this word balance, but as you guys know, like when things become out of bounds, that's when they become a problem. And what we're trying to figure out is when and if it has become out of bounds. Questions on that? Awesome. All right, well, if anybody's interested, let me tell you what the upcoming meetings are one more time, just for the record. The process moving forward is February 8th. There's, we have for this, for the planning board, that's the public hearing and when you can vote on the warrant. Of course, the ones that I just went over, as I mentioned, the short term rental licensing ordinance really isn't a planning board. It's not a land use. It's not a Luso related, because it's an own separate one. So I don't think you need to vote on that. On the 13th, the Board of Selectmen is having their warrant article review. That's like every year we do it at like four o'clock. Same day as the school does their budget. So if anybody's really interested in continuing the conversation on these exciting changes and also learning about the school budget, that's on the 13th. The 24th, 21st of February, we have penciled in a public hearing. I don't know if we're gonna need that. Oh no. The 21st is actually a public hearing on the short term rental ordinance here. And that is at the same time that we would normally have our land use ordinance committee. So it'll be five o'clock, I think, on the 15th, I mean, the 21st. And then February 22nd, which is a regular planning board, we reserve some time for a public hearing if we need to have one. And then there's a warrant committee meeting to go over all these again on the 28th. So where we are. I think for the short term rental one, I mean, hopefully the warrant article one for the loser are pretty straightforward. I mean, if anybody has any comments, now would be a great time to to bring them up so we can make changes before the 8th. But the I'd like to take the opportunity to talk about the short term rental ordinance at all these public meetings because it will help us get a more rounded perspective on it. So that's my, that's my goal. It's a very people are, it's a very, people are very interested in that topic, so.
Well, it's new, that's why. So, but I think short term rentals and housing in general, it's an emotional topic. So it's, it's good to get like more feedback.
So then we can present something good, so.
Noel, I, I thought we had a meeting of the Luso committee on the 14th.
I don't think so. I think it's the 21st. It's usually that, what, third Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
Yep. And so then the 21st, Dave? Anything else? No? Anything we, at some point it would be good to hear after, maybe after this cycle, we could get together and just like talk about what we should be talking about for the next cycle. If you guys, if there's some things that you're.
All these ordinances and the short terms on the town website.
Yep, everything's already posted on there. I have two minor updates to someone who might have to send you tomorrow.
Yeah, that um.
The allowed access, adding the farms and garages, I just, we are gonna, we, the version that Kim has posted, we talked about adding the code up, being the approval like consistently, it is for other things. So that'll be, that'll be a slightly modified version. Yeah. But hopefully most, I think that's really the only one that's more of a policy change. All the other ones are just clarity. And of course the short term rental. Great? All right?
Thank you Noel.
Appreciate it.
Thanks Noel. No problem. Have a good one.
Yeah, can we try one more time to get the owl image to come on?
I can't.
Yeah.
I can't, if it's not, people can see us.
Wrong me.
I know, but I don't know what to do about it.
Go to view really quick again, please.
Experience is awesome. My, they're eating.
So. There you go.
Yay.
All right, now I.
Bye Noel, thank you.
Thanks Noel.
Kim is saying that I'm connected to the wifi, but there's no internet. Yes, I wonder if it's a different router than the bureau? I don't know. Hey, I don't have enough.
Yeah. I couldn't have not the IT techie type of person. Sorry.
If I knew, I would help out.
All right, let's keep rolling down the tracks here. So item four on the agenda tonight, we've got a conditional use approval application. And tonight we've got conditional use approval application 001, 2023. Owner name is Union Meeting House Society. Agent is Carmen Sanford and Robert Ward. They're on the Board of Trustees. And the location is 1132 Main Street, Somerville, tax map 20, lot 19. Zone Village Residential 2 and Shoreland Residential 2. Purpose section 3.4 church expansion of the physically challenged ramp and deck on front of church. We had a site inspection at 4:30 and was this one advertised and the others notified?
Yes, it was advertised in January 12th edition of the Islander and a butters notices went out January 9th.
All right, and I'm sure the board recalls that a little over a year ago, the, these guys were before us for the same exact thing. And they are back tonight because our approval lapsed. And so I'm just, here we go again. And one, one thing Kim gave me too was I've got the checklist and minutes from the the August 25th, 2021 hearing when they were here for this. And let's see, we had a site visit today. Tracy and I attended it. I guess we should officially report on the, on the site visit first. Tracy, would you care to share your observations from today?
Yes, I don't have very much to add, but we were on site and we observed that the deck is in exactly the same condition as it was last time we were there. The intent of the work that's to be done is to, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The intent is to extend the deck by two feet, six inches, so that it has capacity for two people to pass each other on it. And also to extend the ramp, two feet, six inches. So it would make it a more useful and probably much safer deck for people to walk upon and pass each other. So the, the upright, I guess, what's the proper terminology, the, the upright posts of the deck are going to be replaced. There'll be new ones. Alisters. And that, that's about it. Can you add anything else there Bill?
It's pretty straightforward as you described and I'm gonna let Carmen add to that if she cares to. Carmen, you're on.
Thank you. Thanks. Um, there really isn't anything more to add, really. I didn't, or the trustees didn't realize that it was just a one year permit. And we certainly had our difficulties getting the carpenter available, you know, to be available and for us to move forward as well. So I, it was a surprise to me when I actually came to Kim and asked, was asking for a building permit. Because we were, you know, we're ready. We had the estimate done by the same carpenter who was Stanley. Because we added a new type of decking and more, just more pleasant to the eye. So when Kim, when I came to ask, she told me that it had lapsed. And I didn't, we did not realize it was just a one year permit. So there you go. And but it is exactly the same. And we certainly hope that that this summer it will be done and, and you know, will look much nicer and, and it will be safer and wider. And and that's it.
Okay, well, well, welcome back. All right, I guess I'll open it up. Public comment, if anybody has any questions. Feel free to ask. Going once. Twice. I'm gonna close public comment and let's get on with this. So just to remind the board, last time we reviewed this, we used the short form checklist, which I have in front of me from the August 21 hearing. And if anybody care to make a motion to use the short form checklist again.
I'll make a motion to use the short form.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, William Hanley. I should also ask if there is any conflict of interest on the board. None heard. Perhaps a motion to find the application complete.
I'll make the motion to find the application complete.
Tracy Keller, second.
All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. All right, and then we do our review thing where anybody care to make a motion to approve the application?
I make a motion to approve the application.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Then we press the pause button and we actually review the application. And I tell you, is that something we can bring up with Noel? Down the road, just that procedural thing where we just seems kind of nonsensical, but all right, let's do it. So I've got the new application before me. I've got the old short form checklist and I've got the new short form checklist. And let's do this. So here we go, 6A general performance standards compatibility. See application. Same as last time. 6A2 erosion and sedimentation control. And see application, same as last time. 6A3 highway safety. See application. 6A4 impact on town services. And a 6A5 land suitability. See application. Uh, six eight six lighting. And a, there's no lighting proposed. Uh, six eight seven storm water. See application. Six eight eight. Vegetation and a, there was no vegetation being removed and six eight nine dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases. Um, you had N A. So the findings of fact are as presented by the applicant and the attached application. The conclusion was that the proposed uses. In compliance with all standards of sex, section six A. And if you got it, Mary.
I make a motion to a. No, yes, where are we? I make a motion to approve. Still move, yes.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
A dash more, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. All right, and. Section six B specific performance standards for activities and land uses. Last time we had N A for everything. And I'm going through and remarking N A for everything in section six B. Because. The proposed use will include none of the spec- specific activities or land uses described in section six B. And therefore the conclusion was section six B is not applicable.
Do we want it to be not applicable or met? I mean, I know that you said N A for every section, but don't we? Kinda wanna say the application that the standards met?
Yeah, so going through section six B, Meredith, that's where we're looking at six B one agriculture. Six B two air landing sites. Uh, six B seven excavation other than gravel pits or filling. Six B eight fences and walls.
None of the specific standards are discussed. Yeah, all right. Um, so I I so move.
Tracy Keller, second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I um. Curiously, you guys are in the shoreline zone. So we have section, the the tiniest little corner of your lot is the in the shoreline zone. So hence we are reviewing section six C shoreline zoning standards. For review by the planning board and. So last time we had um, section sixty-one agriculture was N A. Um, section sixty-two archaeological sites. We had a map submitted last time. Have one submitted again, so see application. And then sixty-five essential services and a sixty-six parking areas. And a. Sixty-seven marine and freshwater structure standards and a, you're not building a pier. Um, section sixty-nine roads and driveways and a the existing and not being modified. And section sixty-eleven water quality. And a. So we had the findings of fact as the proposed use to include none of, none of the specific activities or land uses. Described in section sixty, except for section sixty-two. And the conclusion law was that section sixty is not applicable except for section sixty-two. For which the standard has been met.
I so move.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. And because they are in the shoreline zone, we have to go through section five nine. So let's do that, so. All right, section five nine one will maintain safe and helpful conditions. And. Yeah, we had N A, but. You know, we went through this uh, last time. Shouldn't technically be.
Yeah, we'll just have common check that.
Yeah, so.
And sign it, initial, excuse me.
Yep. So five nine two will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. Again, they say N A, but shouldn't be, we will be saying, then again, they said.
No, it's not applicable because you didn't, ro- erosion, so uh, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. They're nowhere near the water.
Yep.
Ocean, they're nowhere near the ocean. The reason why they had erosion and sedimentation in the previous review of six A. It's because any soil disturbance requires them to put in road control. That's for a water bomb, yeah, yeah, which they're not near it.
Yep. You guys are what, thirty feet, two inches from Route one oh two?
Right, so they're nowhere near. There's a whole lot behind them. That's.
Right, five nine three will adequately provide for disposable wastewater and hay. Five nine four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life or wa- bird or other wildlife habitat. And a five nine five will conserve shore cover and visuals, actual points of access to inland coastal waters. And a. Five nine six will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comp plan. See application. Five nine seven will not adversely affect existing commercial. In a shoreline commercial district and a, you're not in the shoreline commercial district. Five nine eight will avoid problems associated with floodplain development. And a, you're nowhere near the flood.
Well, you get a map in there, so just to show they're not near the floodplain.
So see application. Cause then submitted a map.
Yeah.
And then uh, five nine nine is in conformance with the provisions of section six A, B and C. Which the standard has been met. The findings of fact are see above and the conclusion was that all requirements for section five nine have been met.
Uh, Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. And then. Looking at the permit conditions from the previous approval, uh, there were none. So I guess we'll circle back to the approval vote. All those in favor of approving the application, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Congratulations again.
So I'll. Over the heated issue of giving handicap people access to the church.
Dave's access. Uh, and and by the way, we do have a new minister after this is, after three years. Um, um, she has been hired and uh, will be with us at, well, shortly after Easter. But that is a.
Good.
Well, me, won't be after Easter, though, but yeah, longer. But thank you very much. And I certainly, I appreciate. Everyone of those looking at and Kim, a- and I just wanna say, Kim has helped grandly. And I'll be back to ask for help on the building permit. Totally. Thank you very much. You all do a wonderful job.
You know, Carmen, we do have the vacancy on the planning board.
Thank you. I'm on the work committee and I'm a trustee and uh. And uh, and bus driver for the sports.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so see you soon. Yes, you will. Thank you.
All right. All right, there's the checklist. When you guys can come on in and sign the checklist. Okay, for. Item five tonight, just bear with me for a second.
You don't have to read it all.
Okay, thank you.
Just explain it's uh, down here.
Yeah. So I'm just gonna jump to the. Item five, who it is, why they're here. So tonight we have property owners Jennifer and Brian Tamadell. Uh, agent is Paul Moniak. Uh, from Haley Ward, uh, property, property line, location is off Wetlands Way and Seal Harbor. Um, tax map thirty-one lot thirty-three. It's in the village uh, residential one district. And the purposes of waiver, the street design and construction standards of section five point one four. The subdivision ordinance for an existing private road. We had a site inspection a quarter to four today. Was this one advertised and the brothers notified?
It was advertised uh, January twelfth in The Islander and a butter's notices were sent out on January ninth.
Okay, so we had a. I guess first I'll report on the um, site visit at quarter four since I was the only planning board member there. And uh, the applicant was there as well as in a butter and um. Agent. Was. Were in attendance and uh, we walked back on Wetland Way and as you know, it's a. A private road going back um, off of Jordan Pond Road and it's. You know, it's spanned the the biggest lot back there expands is the Tamado Lot to the north. And the Wetland Way transitions from a paved. Paved road to a gravel road and that transition is right about on the west side of the Tamado Lot. It's a straight shot back. It's heavily wooded. The tree line is right up against the the existing road. Uh, there's a fence line on the south side of the road. You know, it's um. It's a straight shot gravel road. Uh, it's, it's definitely back in the woods. Uh, there was a um. A stream uh, observed back there. Uh, you can see on the site plan and uh, associated wetland around that. Um, the agent talked about too that they've been in contact with Chief Bender and that there's a. Kind of a hammerhead turnaround for the fire truck proposed on the Tamado Lot in the back. Um, so there's technically one, two, three. Four, five properties of budding the the Wetland Way um, road. Uh, not all of them use it, but uh, you know, it's, it's a, a quiet, heavily wooded. Dilex setting back in there and I will turn that over to the. Agent to take it from there.
Yeah, thank you. I'll step up here and maybe you can see me better. Uh, Paul Moniak, I'm with Haley Ward. I'm a civil engineer. And uh, Brian and Jen are on the call here. You'll see their names on the screen. Um, so if you have any questions, they can certainly hop on and answer as well, but um, as was pointed out by the chair. Um, the whole point of being here is um, my client would like to put a house on the property they own. And in order to do so, uh, they need to improve the road. As it was stated, it goes from a paved road down to a gravel road. And when I say uh, a gravel road, it's. Two tire tracks on gravel kind of that kind of go back to the last property. Um, we did some research just trying to figure out the history of this a little bit and I had that on the application, but we believe. Wetland Way as well as Blue Bell Lane, which is on the other side of um, the properties on the south, were. Somewhere created around nineteen forty, uh, long before maybe some of these standards were in place in the ordinance. Um, for the road and street standards. Um, and so what we're doing is updating the road as best we can to meet fire access. Uh, and it was pointed out to go to the street construction standards for a subdivision, even though the road will remain a private road. So uh, in our application, we pointed out all the requirements and what we're proposing. And there are only two items in which we are asking for waivers. One is the minimum right of way, which is fifty feet of right of way. Um, and I said at the site visit, typically that right of way is provided. In case you have large fill slopes or cut slopes or large roadside ditches. Or there's the potential for an additional turn lane or something to that effect. Uh, many towns have the same policy in place. Uh, but if you were at the site, you would see that this is a. Dead end street that is on a very flat terrain. Um, I think I calculated the slope to be about two percent. Uh, and uh, it is, there's no fill slope or cut slope other than the fill needed to put in the gravel. And so that's why it sits maybe a foot higher than the grade next to it. Um, so of course we'll just widen what's already there. Uh, with as little disturbance as possible. As we stated, it's quite wooded and it's a, a very quiet little location. And the idea is to be able to put a house back there with having very little impact to what's already occurring. Uh, on that street and and not affecting any of the others as best we can. Um, the other thing I should point out that was in the application, if we did go to a fifty foot right of way, which. Would require us to go to all the butters and ask for property, it would result in a number of uh, non-conforming lots. Because their houses would now be closer to that uh, property line than is allowed in that zone. So um, there's a number of different reasons why we, we think that it's probably uh, not. Um, in our best interest to do that, but of course we have to ask for the waiver for that. Uh, the other one is the width of the road. It's stated in the ordinance that um. Well, we're uh, I think it was eighteen, no, road with, road with a sixteen. Uh, and that's what we're proposing. Um, and we had. Uh, run this by the, the chief uh, for his hammerhead turnaround. He wants it a little wider to make sure that he can make the turn. And we did submit that plan to him for him to review and he sent back an email saying that it is acceptable for what he needs. Um, and I was explaining as well at the site visit, the clearance is both for width and height. So um, NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Agency, has a requirement for thirteen feet, eight inches of height clearance. So uh, tree limbs maybe would need to be trimmed as well to prepare for that sort of access. But really, that's why this whole road thing is being proposed. Um. Is because we need to get emergency vehicles to all these property owners. So. We're just trying to fall in line and have this occur so that in the spring, uh, my clients can then build their house. So. Um, so those are the two waivers are basically, um, we're gonna stick with the sixteen foot wide width and we're going to um. Not increase the road right away by uh, up to fifty feet, which is double what's there now, twenty-five feet. So. I guess I'll take questions at this time, if anyone has any.
Yeah, Paul, can I just jump in for a minute? This is Brian Tamel. Um, I just wanna say hello to everybody. Apologize, we can't be there this week. Um, my wife and I were planning to make the trip and unfortunately had a, a death in the family. Um, and the uh, the, the funeral was uh, coincided with the meeting um, dates. Um, but we, our, our intent was to be there. Um, I did wanna uh, uh, Paul, I know in our discussions, we had talked about the uh, cul-de-sac. The turnaround versus the uh, hammerhead. I think that was also part. Hammerhead, I think that was also part of the the waiver. I just wanted to. Make sure that was clear. Is that correct? Is that correct, Paul?
It does stay in the ordinance that provisions have to be made for turnaround and the cul-de-sac is the method that is proposed or that is recommended, but. So when we did the hammerhead instead of a cul-de-sac, that's when I took it to the fire chief for his approval. So you're right. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think we were good on the width and it was just the cul-de-sac was the other way for rate. Yeah.
Right. Okay, yeah.
And I got a question. You state thirteen eight is the NFDA clearance requirement. The chief in the past of previous. Reviews has required fourteen five. Was that mentioned to him? Fourteen five clear? In any of your correspondence with him?
He did not mention the height and I didn't mention the height. I just stated that based on my recollection, but fourteen five may have may actually be.
Yeah, he 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 was referencing like what the. Existing or driveway standards are as far as for clearances. Which would require fourteen five clear on the sides and above. I know he stated in the email that the, sorry, the hammerhead is acceptable, but I don't see where. Sorry, where the fourteen five was mentioned and maybe that should be noted somewhere. Maybe in the guy's condition that Mike's okay with, if he's okay with thirteen eight. For NFPA. Or would he prefer fourteen five?
I, yeah, I I don't believe that we have any objections to either. So I mean, if it's fourteen five, that's, by all means, you know, we're just clearing trees, trimming them up at this point to meet that clearance.
And as far as ditching along the roadway with widening of the road, you show ditching. One foot on one side, but what's the other side?
That the road is elevated above the grade on either side, but we're proposing at least a. A fill slope that will be at least probably one and a half to two feet deep. And then. Try to have at least one foot width if there is a a cut slope back up the other way.
And you said it's pretty flat. There's no way that it sits towards. What's this?
Oh, there is. It does go back and forth. It tips back and forth. But I'm talking about longitudinal from Jordan Pond Road to the end of. In that direction. It's it's a slight pitch from Jordan or from the end of the road towards Jordan Pond Road.
Okay, but there's no chance of any drainage or any issues affecting the people that currently are to the south?
No, no, then I think most of the water that will occur as runoff from this road addition. Will eventually get into what was deemed a stream when we had the D E P out there, so.
And it's technically at sixteen foot travel way with two two foot shoulders. I'm reading the detail here.
Oh, that's what, yeah, so that's what the two foot shoulders are what we weren't proposing. We were keeping it at sixteen feet, which is. In line with what's. Down the street there.
So you're not putting in any shoulders?
No, right.
So that's another waiver.
Yeah, it's right. There's no designation between or difference between the two between travel and shoulder. It's just. A travel way of sixteen feet.
I'm good with my question, sorry.
Any other questions from the public?
Didn't we just change something about the code to make this easier?
Meredith, I think that's that could be an excellent suggestion to know.
Didn't we vote on something last year? There were people that were coming through and there was something like that was went through town. I mean, obviously. We're looking at the code, but I thought we had made it a little bit easier when it's. Obvious that they don't really have any other options.
Yeah, well, weren't you guys proposing to divide the lot too? Isn't that, wasn't that your plan?
At one point, yes, that was.
So you're not dividing it anymore?
Well, you said step one was getting the road access. Before we could discuss anything else. So we're proposing the road access. They, it is one acre. It is the largest lot on that street. There is the potential to stay within the standard and split that into two lots. And I think that they would like to maybe explore that again, but they know that this is step one, so there's no point in talking about that.
Yeah, and this is Brian again. I just want to say that that is something that we're we're looking into and a potential. To to do a subdivision into two lots.
That doesn't complicate this. That doesn't complicate this, doesn't it?
Were there any concerns at the site visit from the butter? Didn't you say she was present?
She was present. She she asked them that they're gonna connect to town water and town sewer and. And Mr. Moniak explained that they're they're intending to do that. They talked about the. That you talked to Tony Smith about the lines out in Jordan, Jordan Pond Road. You know, can obviously connecting to the newer PVC line, not the old clay tile line. She, you know. She didn't have any objections or any concerns about it, just a couple of questions. You know, and essentially the. The extension of Wetlands Way is, you know. You know, very similar to what's existing there. And as opposed to, you know, just the. The character of Wetlands Way, you know, and she, you know, they explained just the. The, you know, the right of way standards and why the why they're seeking a waiver in there. There was a pretty straightforward site visit.
Yeah, she, the butter, Cheryl Belong is the butter and she had indicated that the reason that half the road is paved is because. At one point, one of the neighbors was paving the driveway and then asked. The other neighbors if they had interest in paving their driveways as well. And when they did. They decided to pave that little section of Wetland Way from Jordan Pond Road in past their driveway. So. That's sort of how that came about, but of course they stopped just shy of the second half of the road, which includes my client and one other. A butter down the bar. So.
I thought it was the one on the end that might have shown up because she came in and got a copy of the plan. Mrs. Doyle on the end.
We talked too about the classification of the wetland. If you want to talk about that too, just for the record.
Yeah, the the only information we have currently on the property is a wetland delineation that was done. In nineteen ninety-four by one of the previous owners of the property. We did have the main D E P out there. They looked at the stream. D E P typically, as well as Army Corps and some other jurisdictions that look after those things, don't look at wetland delineations. Older than two years of age because they know that conditions change. There is also a piece of wetlands where. You have various categories, including freshwater, saltwater, and then wetlands of special significance. Wetlands of special significance are the ones that they're most concerned with because they're usually attached to some sort of. Water body, whether it's a stream, river, lake, pond. And then, of course, veronal pools, which are depressions that do not have. Any downhill exiting of the water and that usually is habitat for animals. So. At this time, the only thing we have of special significance would be the twenty-five foot. The wetlands within twenty-five foot stream setback of the stream. And I believe per the town's definition of wetlands, that those are the ones that.
Yeah, I just wanted to. I'm pretty sure when we look through the details and definitions for the town of what qualifies as wetland. Nothing on the property actually qualified per the town ordinance as wetland. As far as the D E P is concerned, yes, the stream qualified as a wetland. And they have the regulation of the twenty-five feet around it, but per the township code, it did not.
Hey, any further questions of the applicant from the public? Going once. Twice. All right, I'm gonna close public comments and let's soldier on here. So I'm. Think the first thing I probably should probably ask if there is any conflict on the board with this one. None heard. Second, if. The board's gonna find the application complete.
No.
No.
There's no, there's no review for completeness like that.
There's no application they.
You just go to your six point one point one in your subdivision.
There you go, six point one point one in the subdivision ordinance. And just. I will, I will bore everybody here, but I am gonna read that really quick. You know, when we're talking about waiver and modifications of six point one point one, you know. What that's talking about is where the board finds that a private road providing access to a lot or lots cannot meet. The street design and construction standards of section five point one four because A. The application of land use restrictions would prevent the work requiring to bring an existing road into compliance or B. Physical conditions of the site render strict compliance impossible, then the board may waive such things. And then it goes on to talk about however, in all such cases, the board must find that A. The proposed plan brings the road into compliance as much as feasible. B, the proposed plan will provide for safe access to and from the property. And C, the proposed plan will allow for access to the site for emergency vehicles. So. Don't we need to. First have a motion that the. The existing road cannot meet the street design and construction standards of five point one four.
Well, you you can go through. Or you submitted. The request for the waiver is because of the means. Because he indicates that the minimum right of way width. Required is fifty, but they they only have twenty-five and. By trying to obtain additional land from. Other property owners along the roadway would create non-conformities. So therefore they're requesting a waiver for the minimum right of way width.
Heidi, did you get that?
Uh, no, I did not.
Yeah.
But. The right of way, the current right of way is twenty-five feet.
Right. The required.
And the street design and construction standards. Under section five point one four of the subdivision ordinance. Requires a minimum right of way width of fifty feet.
Yep. Sorry, I know you can hear me typing.
No, okay. And then the. The agent slash applicants or owners.
Are proposing to take the right way to twenty five.
Well, I thought twenty-five was already mentioned. Was it already mentioned?
That the required under five point one four is fifty, proposed is twenty-five and existing. And it can't be in the.
Can't be widened due to creation of non-conformities. On lots that. Currently use the private road.
So we're, so just to get the the big picture here, we're going through and we need motions and bindings on. The technically, there's three, there's, there's three waivers that they're asking for.
And we gotta look at them against. Why the lot can't meet the street design and construction standards.
So we.
And it gives you the breakdown on the five fourteen.
We need a motion and finding on the right of way. We need a motion and finding on the. Actual travel width. And then we need a motion and finding on the. On the the shoulder waiver.
Yeah. Everything else so meeting.
Yeah.
I thought we needed something where it wasn't gonna be a cul-de-sac, but it's gonna be a hammerhead.
And do we need a.
That's under five fourteen.
That's under five fourteen and because they can't meet that. And we've got a a letter from the chief to.
You could say that the proposed hammerhead was presented to the fire chief as presented on the site plan. And the fire chief approved. The details of the hammerhead as designated on the site via email.
So let's first get a. A motion and finding on the right of way request.
But you were, you were starting, Heidi was writing down the writing, the wording. On that, do you have complete wording on that? I'm try, I'm trying to clean it up, but what I have so far, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, proposed right of way is twenty-five feet. And street design and construction under section five point fourteen of the subdivision. Ordinance requires a minimum of fifty feet. The right of way cannot be widened because widening creates non-conformities on the properties abutting the right of way.
Yes.
Private roadway.
Private roadway.
Private roadway, thanks.
Yeah, private roadway slash right of way.
Okay. I've got that. Should you say widening the right of way requires acquiring. Requires acquiring land from adjacent properties that would. Cause them to become non-conforming. Just to clarify with the.
We'll let Heidi read it back to us one more.
Yeah, I'm thinking here. Okay, so the proposed right of way is twenty-five feet. And street design and construction under section five point fourteen of the subdivision ordinance. Requires a minimum of fifty feet. The right of way cannot be widened. Because widening creates non-conformities on the properties abutting the private roadway right of way. Roadway slash right of way.
Let's say due to lot area and setbacks.
Where do you want that part?
Conformities due to lot area and setbacks.
Oh, okay. Okay, do you want to hear this again?
Yes, please.
All right, proposed right of way is twenty-five feet. And street design and construction under section five point fourteen of the subdivision ordinance requires a minimum of fifty feet. The right of way cannot be widened because widening creates non-conformities due to lot areas and setbacks. On the properties abutting the private road slash right of way.
Feeling good?
It's your call.
There you go.
We could do a findings of uh conclusion of law that the, the road standard width. The right of way width cannot be. Um achieved.
Alright. Alright, uh, proposed right of way is twenty-five feet. And street design and construction under section five point fourteen of the subdivision ordinance requires a minimum of fifty feet. The right of way cannot be widened because widening creates. Non-conformities due to lot areas and setbacks on the properties abutting the private road slash right of way. Therefore, the road standards of the, of right of way cannot be achieved, or do you want con-? Conclusion of law is that the road standards? How do you want that?
That the.
Street design and construction standards.
Yes.
Oh, the street design.
And construction standards.
Of section five point one four.
Of the subdivision. With regards to the minimum right of way cannot be met.
Okay, therefore, the street design and road standards of section five point fourteen of the subdivision ordinance. In regards to the minimum right of way cannot be achieved?
Minimum right of way width.
Alright.
Cannot be met.
Cannot be met, alrighty.
And it's street design and construction standards.
Street design and construct, road construction design, standards or just construction?
Street design and construction standards.
Alright, great, I got it. Do you wanna hear it again?
Sure.
Okay, proposed right of way is twenty-five feet. And street design and construction under section five point fourteen of the subdivision ordinance. Requires a minimum of fifty feet, the right of way cannot be widened because widening creates non-conformities. Due to lot areas and setbacks on the properties abutting the private wa- roadway slash right of way. Therefore, the street design and construction standards of section five point fourteen of the subdivision ordinance. In regards to the minimum right of way width cannot be met.
Can I change one thing?
Yes.
The, it's not a proposed twenty foot, twenty-five foot right of way, it's an existing twenty-five foot.
Okay.
Right away. I don't think we need to hear it again.
Alrighty.
And that, that twenty-five foot right of way extends all the way out to the Jordan Pond Road.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not that we need to add that.
No, it's, yeah, it's no, it's on the plan.
Bill, can I just comment that um, we seem to have a, a bunch of people here attending on Zoom? And we've only had two of the public sign-ins. So if everybody who's present at the meeting on Zoom could please sign in in the chat box.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
Thanks, look here, she's, you've got.
I only see two.
Oh, there was.
Yeah, we've only got.
No, I've got, I've got everybody written down, who signed in.
Yeah, thanks, Meredith. Yeah, so if you are attending on Zoom, please just go in the chat and sign in, please, so we can keep track of it.
We got, we got them all.
We got, we got them all.
Yeah, I got them, I got them all just now.
Great.
Right here.
Thanks, Meredith. Alright, so we have the motion on the table. Do we have a second? Anybody need to hear it again?
Dave Ashmore, second.
Alright, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye, um, so now we need another motion about the.
Excuse me.
Proposed um.
Width of shoulders.
Minimum width of shoulders, or do you wanna do the road width? Well, they.
They're doing six.
Yeah, they're meeting that.
Meeting that, it's the shoulders that they're asking from three to zero.
Yeah. Right, so the minimum width of shoulders uh required under section five point one four is three feet. And the applicant is proposing zero. And. Maybe again, for the record, the. Mr. Moniak could explain why you're proposing zero for the minimum width of the shoulders.
Yeah, uh, sure, so um, one, the road width of sixteen would match that. It's already paved closer to Jordan Pond Road, um, secondly, uh, two, three foot shoulders would be six feet. So, yeah, and so six on sixteen is twenty-two, that leaves very little wiggle room. Um, in that twenty-five foot road right of way, um, the survey information along that road. Uh, it's hit or miss, but I do believe that the one property that had the fence may in fact be on or over the property line. Which sort of um constricts us a little bit there, uh, and then most importantly, um, the. The applicant would really like to keep the feel of the woodsy area as well as their abutting neighbors, I believe. Um, so that would require extensive tree clearing along that road and opening that up. Um, that they really just would rather not do if, if they can choose to, so. I don't know if Brian or Jen have any other comments on that.
Yeah, I think you, you addressed it, Paul, um, if we have to clear another six feet of trees, it's something, if we don't have to do, we'd really prefer not to. Um, for, for everybody that's seen the area, um, uh, there's a lot of trees there and it is quiet and peaceful, and if we can keep more of them, we, we'd like to.
So we need a motion and finding on the. Proposed minimum width of shoulders being reduced from three to zero.
Each side.
Each side. Perhaps.
Have we done that in the past? What's, what's our?
Nobody's asked for shoulder, but I can recall.
Yeah.
In the past, um, reviews.
Usually, there are shoulders.
I mean, I empathize with the request, I just don't know, you know, do we wanna be setting the precedence that you can. Just not do that requirement just because you don't want to. I mean, there, there certainly are area, there are sections of this where they can't do it, that, the, the areas that you can see that it crosses. People's properties, I don't, I don't have any feeling about it, I just don't know what we should be doing.
I don't know, I, I, I feel like these road waiver requests are so contextually specific that um. You know, we, we tried to. Have, have motions and findings as specific as the locations dictate. And in this case, you know, what I experienced with the site visit is, yeah, it's heavily wooded and. You know, maintaining the character of the existing, you know, road back in there, I think. Does have merit, you know, and, you know, if they, if we don't have to cut. Three feet of trees either side of the road or, you know. Squeeze the road to within a foot and a half of each side of the right of way. I, I think that's beneficial to maintaining the, the character of the existing drive or.
Can I add one point two?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and one other point, um, I think it was mentioned that um, there are four. I think property owner to now access this, um, their property from this road. Uh, three of which occur closer to Jordan Pond Road, and as I stated, those property owners got together. And paid their section of road, so in the section that is the narrowest right in front of my client's property, the only other person. Um, that accesses that are the property owners named Doyle, and they are at the end of the road. Uh, so really, uh, I think any improvement at this point from what's there is, is for my client. And that person's use only, um, if they were held to that at all.
Can I ask you a question about your cross-section? You show the travel way to be sixteen, and you show two-foot shoulders on each side, which would be grass shoulders, reinforced grass shoulders. The fire chief, I know in the past, has allowed grass shoulders, provided it can withstand the fire truck weight.
Yes.
Um, to me, it looks like you're asking for a two-foot waiver, not, not zero. Cause you're providing actually a twenty-foot width.
Okay.
If, if I'm reading your cross-section accurately.
Yes, that is what I have, yeah.
Hmm, so ideally, you're not, you're only asking for um.
Technically.
Two.
Two feet.
Cause you have to have three on each side, so it's six, and you show four, so. It's not that you're not providing shoulders, you're showing they are, they're grass, which, like I said. Have been reviewed and approved, and wanted to travel with, the sixteen foot is a material, whoops. Um, an aggregate, you know, material that's approved, um, so I don't think you're, you're not asking for no shoulders, you are providing them.
Right, do you got, do you guys see that on the proposed site plan submitted, you know?
Right, I think in um, you know, many, many areas, the, you'll see the shoulder, even if it's paved, um, it's for bikes and walkings. Um, maybe in a subdivision, it's people who park on the side of the road and you can get another vehicle by it, but. Um, that's the point I was trying to make is that there's one additional property owner beyond my client who would benefit from the use of the. Um, shoulders built through the standard in the code.
I think the, I think the two feet uh makes it much easier, easier, e- easier for us to find that the pro- proposed plan. Brings the road into compliance as much as feasible, rather than zero, I feel better about that. The next thing that we have to go through.
Yeah. Do they need to amend their application then?
Yeah, he'll just have to send the revise.
Okay.
Just that page.
So essentially, there, the waiver request is to reduce the required shoulder width.
On each side from three to two feet.
From three to two feet.
So, do you wanna findings of fact and conclusion of law, or do you want just a? Uh, proposed. Do we put it in that wording, finding a fact and conclusion of law?
No, finding and conclusion, get it with the right.
Yeah, let's have, did it with the first one, so let's stay the course and.
Yeah, so the findings of fact are that the, the. Uh, practical. Practically, they could, they can provide a two-foot shoulder. Um. And the conclusion.
On each side.
On, on each side of the road.
On each side of the road. And the conclusion of law is they. Uh. Are achieving the standard as closely as practically possible?
As feasible as possible, this.
Sure.
While maintaining um minimal to no further impact on existing. Mature tree growth. How's that sound, Heidi?
Alright, I've got um. Well, I've got the applicant can provide a two-foot shoulder on each side of the road. The conclusion of law is the applicant is achieving the standard as feasibly as possible. While maintaining minimal to no further impact on mature tree growth.
Should, should we be specific and cite the sixteen-foot road width?
Wait.
How, how do you wanna plug that in?
Why would you wanna?
Well, that.
They're meeting, they're achieving the required sixteen-foot width requirement.
So, just.
These are just shoulders.
Okay.
They're not asking for a waiver on the.
Maybe, but I say, say while achieving the sixteen-foot right of way, they are only provo- providing. Two.
Roadway.
Roadway. And there, but, and then say what, the rest of it, Heidi, but just start with a while they are.
While achieving the existing, the required sixteen-foot road width. Just trying to key it into like the details submitted.
Do you wanna hear what I have?
Yes, please.
Alright, while achieving the required sixteen-foot road width, I wrote right of way, hold on here. Uh, while achieving the required sixteen-foot road width, the applicant can provide a two-foot shoulder on each side of the road. The conclusion of law is the applicant is achieving the standard as feasibly as possible. While maintaining minimal to no further impact on mature tree growth.
What do you think, Dave?
That was good to me.
Tracy, what do you think?
I agree, I think that suffices.
If I made the motion, who wants to second?
Dave Ashmore, second.
Alright, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye.
I'll be called the same.
Alright. Then we have the cul-de-sac requiring that under section five point one.
Dead-end streets.
One, one-four for dead-end streets, and the applicant is proposing a. Hammerhead turnaround as shown on their C one oh one proposed site plan and. Um, for which the fire chief has. Um. Submitted approval of via an email. Right?
Yep.
How about the findings of fact are that the fire chief has. Approved the proposed hammerhead, and the conclusion of law is that the standards met? I mean, isn't that exactly what it says, is that you just need to get approval from the fire chief? That is adequate?
It has, says that the, the proposed plan will provide safe access to and from the property. And that the proposed plan will allow for access to it, to the site for emergency vehicles.
So the, the finding of fact is that they got approval from the fire chief, and the conclusion of law is. So the standard's met.
Yeah, just say that the proposed plan. With the proposed hammerhead instead of a cul-de-sac. Will provide safe access to and from the property. And the proposed plan will allow for safe. I'm sorry, will allow for access to the site for emergency vehicles.
Alright. Uh, okay, so Kimberly, was that a conclusion of law, or was that a finding of fact? Do you want it at the front of the motion or at the back, I guess is my question?
Um, I'd say at the back.
Okay, so this is what I have, the fire chief has, I'm gonna move that right now, the fire chief. Has approved the proposed hammerhead, uh, the conclusion of law. Uh, the conclusion of law is, the proposed plan, uh, I'm sorry. What do I got here? Fire chief has approved the proposed hammerhead. The conclusion of law is that the proposed hammerhead instead of a cul-de-sac will provide safe access to and from the property and the proposed plan will allow access to the site for emergency vehicles.
Sounding good. What do you think, Meredith?
Sounds good to me.
Dave, what do you think?
Sounds good.
Tracy?
Yes, I agree.
I think that's technically Meredith's motion. Just need a second.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. Okay, those are the three waiver requests, now that we need to have them.
Yeah, final therefore stating the
Yeah.
Proposed.
So then a final motion to approve based upon the
Yeah.
The findings that the-
The, that the proposed, um-
The proposed use.
No, not used.
The proposed right-of-way waiver request, shoulder request and on the camera head road hammerhead configuration.
The road in compliance is feasible.
Will bring the road into compliance as much as feasible. Um, provide safe, safe access to and from the property and will allow for access to the site for emergency vehicles.
Gotta be done then, isn't it?
Totally. Would-
Just say that, you know, the um, with the findings and facts and conclusions of laws, um, on the three waiver requests brings the road in the compliance as feasible.
As much as is feasible.
Yeah.
And provide safe access to and from a property and access to the site for emergency vehicles. A, B, and C.
Okay, but yeah, it is kind of, but you can only beat it so much.
I mean, it's keyed, it's keyed right into the language of-
Right, yep.
Six one one.
Yep.
You wanna try that one, Heidi?
All righty, this is what I have. The proposed right-of-way waiver request, shoulder request, and hammerhead configuration will bring the road into compliance as much as is feasible, will provide safe access to and from the property and will allow for safe access to the site for emergency vehicles.
Meredith, what do you think? How's that sound?
Sounds good to me, do you want me to say, I make that a motion?
Sure thing. Unless Dave-
Label that my motion.
All right, that's Meredith's motion, Dave, Tracy. And it sounds like Dave's seconding that.
That's true.
All right, any further discussion? None heard, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. That technically it. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone, yeah.
Thank you, everybody, for your time, really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, just to clarify for item six tonight, under other, we do not have any other applications or requests for uh, any discussions under other. Um, therefore, um, we move on to item seven, which is adjournment.
Uh, Kim? Kim? Will you have Jennifer, have Jennifer email me what needs to be signed? Um, and I'll get them right back.
Sure, yeah.
She got the one.
We got your other ones by the way.
Yeah, just today, I, I checked to see, yeah. It-
Yeah, we got.
But, yeah, the mail takes like five days.
I, yeah.
Of course it does.
Hey Dave, why don't you make a motion to adjourn while you're at it?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll-